Okay, let's see, it is seven o'clock. Are you ready, Timbo? You ready, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let me see if my microphone is on. Mr. Microphone is working. Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting of Monday, November 16th, 2020. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move public comments in front of the special presentation and the year-end updates.
I have a motion. And a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, let's start with public comments. And number one, Michelle. Ooh, packets. Okay, Michelle, you state your name, your full name and your address.
I'm Michelle Brown, 7566 Thorn Creek Lane, TDK. You can't hear me?
Um, you might have to just adjust the microphone some. Try that again.
Michelle Brown. That's better. Yeah. 7566 Thorn Creek Lane.
So we just gonna be talking about the beer?
Yeah. Well, I will start, so I have just something quick and I'm gonna read from it, otherwise I'll mess up. Um, but this is very much a first world problem. It's just really something that has been...
Tim, can you hear that back there? Okay? Okay. It's just me. My, I get my eyes, my ears aren't working.
I can take my mask down. That helps. Okay, is that better?
You're within six feet from somebody.
Yeah, okay. I'm just saying it's a first world problem. I know you guys deal with a lot of really crazy things and this, when I say trees, is really about trees. But my name's Michelle Brown and I've been a resident of TDK since 2007. We currently reside on Thorn Creek Lane, which is in the Trail Ridge subdivision, and we back up to the 15th hole on the Grand View Golf Course. One of the most appealing wow factors of the location we chose was the view, which also came with a lot premium. Promise it's quick. Um, and for many years, obviously, we'd sit out back and be able to see all the way from the fairway to the green and always enjoyed watching a good game of golf. Over the years, you'll see that the trees and the natural area have completely taken over and restrict any kind of view. Uh, selfishly, we just spent a fortune building a retaining wall and a new patio and would love to be able to still um, enjoy the view that we used to have. I'm honestly not sure if this is even the right forum that I should be speaking with, but I was really just trying to see if we could ask either the golf course management company or the council for permission to just de-lim the trees. And you'll see in the third picture, you really can't see anything anymore. So we, we don't want to cut down the trees. I just don't want to start cutting down trees without approval.
What, what holds us? What fairway?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, gotcha. Okay, I know where fifteen is. All right.
And I, there's a, several neighbors that had the same concerns. They just, yes. They were unable to be here, but I also understand you can't start this because then everybody's gonna say we want the same.
Well, we'll look at it.
So it's just more if we could maybe clean it up a little bit with approval.
Pictures say a thousand words. I get it.
Cool. That was easy. Yes, yes.
Okay, we'll, we have your email address. We'll definitely discuss it and get back with you, okay?
Thank you.
Next up, Tom, you want to talk about the Ring of Fire? Please state your name, your full name and your address.
Okay, good evening. Tom Heisler. I live at 11156 Turtle Bay Court here in TDK. Came in a couple of months ago, proposed the idea of the Ring of Fire. You guys directed me to Chief Hasty, who's been fabulous. I want to thank him for his help. I think we have a real good uh, handle on his situation. I know I emailed yourself, Mr. Mayor. Picked the date of December 12th. The fire department has reviewed the language for potential social media posts and approved, approved the fire safety language. And that's about it. We're looking December 12th, 7:00 PM. One thing we're asking for feedback or comments is if anybody knows any people that do uh, videography with drones or anything like that, they would be looking to maybe get up, take some pictures. It might look nice.
Joseph?
Well, yeah, Joseph could do it, or I was even thinking, um, Scott.
Well, it's such a, a big area. I mean, it's the...
We need a, we need the drone.
Yeah, we need a drone, yeah. So, uh, you've, you've obviously worked this someplace else before.
Nope.
Nope?
First time. First time.
All right.
We stole this idea from the Finger Lakes up in New York. They've been doing it for years on, on Labor Day and um...
Well, I'm excited for it. I hope it catches on. If it doesn't the first time, then it'll second year, then a little bit the third year, then a little bit the fourth year. Whatever it takes.
Okay.
Tom, how are you getting the word out other than social media? Are you...
Social media, I know the TDK Moms groups. Uh, we got some moms in the group. They're gonna put it out there.
Uh-oh, here come the moms. Uh, Joseph, you got some connections over at the Herald or something? Maybe you can do a story on him or you can just kind of give them a a little push on that. I'd like to really see this thing take off.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be fun.
Yeah.
Real fun.
I mean, there's already people do, we do bonfires on the beach all the time, so why not just get, make a coordinated effort and do it?
Yeah, get it all lit up. Be kind of cool.
Visit York County or...
You've been CN too, yeah. Yeah, we could reach out to the, visit York County.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good excuse to buy Joseph a drone. Do we?
We do?
Awesome.
Do you not fly it?
Joseph already has a drone.
All right, awesome. There we go. Problem solved.
All right.
Very nice.
Cool.
All right, I can't wait to see the pictures and...
And I know you'd mentioned, sir, about maybe the city putting on their social media as well. If, if you'd like, I can email you the language and stuff and, I mean, that Chief...
Do, work through Joseph there. He's our social media guy.
Perfect. Okay. Will do.
I misspelled tree, honestly, so I just...
Not to worry.
But yeah, I'm excited. This is gonna be great. I can't wait to see it.
Well, thank you. That's all I have.
And then we're gonna do it next year, too.
Yes, oh yeah.
No matter what. Let's hope it doesn't rain on us and then we'll do it the next year after that.
Maybe it'll keep getting bigger.
Keep it up.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Okay, Carl, let's talk about fences. Speak, your name and your address.
Carl Schaefer, 7769 Trail Ridge Drive. Well, here we are, one last time hopefully to get this thing through. Just wanted to just for y'all to consider the, the good changes that I think have been proposed by this, uh, the fencing code change. Uh, I've seen some additional applications come through as the ARC acting president, so uh, I think we're moving in the right direction of approve some fences that I think adhere better to the, to the new guidelines, so just hoping that you guys will consider and approve um, the push on the fencing code changes. Code changes, I think they're good.
Thank you. Now, Susan, just to reiterate, um, this is, just brings us up to regular, what is it, international codes, state codes, AEIOU, MOUSEE codes, whatever it is. This is just the same codes that everybody else has got. We're not any different now, right?
It's, the ICC is what it was.
What's it called?
The ICC, International Codes Council.
That's the one I was talking about. All right, thanks, Carl. Are there anybody, anybody else that would like to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up for this? All right, seeing none, a public hearing is closed. Let's start with item number one, uh, two now, would be special presentation, Arbor Day proclamation, which I have right here. Put on my glasses so I can read this. Uh, this is the Special Arbor Day proclamation, "Whereas the City of TDK celebrates 30 years as a tree city USA, which recognizes the value of trees to the community and has adopted the act of celebrating first Friday of, in December as Arbor Day. Trees contribute to the aesthetics and to the community and when properly cared for increase property values and beautify our neighborhoods, enhance livability of our city throughout the filtering of stored water and air pollution. Whereas it is the purpose of this proclamation on this day throughout the state of South Carolina to encourage planting trees and to follow the actions of J. Sterling Morton in 1872. Now therefore, we, the mayor and council of the City of TDK do hereby proclaim Friday, December 4th, 2020 as Arbor Day in the City of TDK, South Carolina and urge all residents of the city to observe Arbor Day by attending the Arbor Day ceremonies in memory of Mark Slocum, City IT Manager at Trailhead Park dated the 16th day of November, 2020. Signed, David L. O'Neil, Mayor, City of TDK." That's very nice, student for Mark. That's good. All right, so that will be, uh, as you said, Mayor, uh, December the 4th, that will be at 12:30 at Trailhead Park. Okay, so December, that is, is that also Tree Lighting Day? Yes, sir. Okay, so that's gonna be a full day. All right, next we have some, guess maybe some, next we have some year-end updates. Let's start with the fire department. Chief, you gonna speak to us about the fire department?
Look, Mayor and Council, how are you?
Very good.
Good, good. So what we're gonna do is I'm just gonna run through real quickly, uh, the year of 2020 and what a year it's been. Uh, we've had some challenges. Uh, we've overcome those challenges and progressed pretty quickly. All right, so uh, response stats is where we'll start. Uh, we broke this down in calls by type. Uh, just so you can see those, we, we are, when I did this, we were year to date of 641. Today, we're at 673. So our calls continue to climb. A lot of calls that we're running, and we're running about 35 or, um, excuse me, about 60% medical and the other 40 are this and that. Some good intent calls, uh, false alarms, that kind of stuff. So, uh, you know, our fire calls, actual fires are up at about 31. So the, the numbers are there, uh, and we can go into stats. I can show you a lot more detail if you like at some point, but that's where we are. So uh, currently, we're on track for over 3,000 training hours departmentally, uh, which is a huge accomplishment considering we went through five months of no training, pretty much, uh, with COVID. We had to transition to online learning and to video learning, which is absolutely horrible, uh, for a hands-on trade. So, uh, we, we have done that. We've, uh, transitioned. We came out of that and hit the ground running. Uh, so we, we've been blessed. Uh, this year, what we've, what we're looking at in '21 is, uh, we're looking to develop some rope skills, some high angle skills. If we have someone trapped on a water tower or something like that, we can reach out and get them with some rope rescue skills, uh, which is just to follow the confined space rescue skills that we're picking up in this calendar year. The, uh, water rescue piece kind of follows exactly what we talked about last, last month, uh, with the Swiftwater Rescue Vehicle, which is a jet ski that we've got, uh, that's coming as a result of a grant. It's 16 hours per member in our organization to bring those water rescue skills up, just due to the demand. Uh, we are trying to meet the ISO 1 compliant training hours for our staff, which is 192 hours per person, uh, company training hours and then the associated hours that we have to have. So it puts us about 220 hours a person a year, which is pretty significant. EMT, I'll talk about that real quickly. Uh, we've joined with York Tech. York Tech is actually partnering with us to deliver EMT continuing education for our firefighters in the fire stations, uh, which is huge. It's a cost of $1,300 to us, uh, which is incredible training that they give us. Anytime we do hands-on, it better improves the skill sets of everybody involved. It's better than online learning. Uh, some of the initiatives that we've had, uh, we're still doing some events, not as many, obviously because of COVID. Uh, the EMS partnerships, we're, we've, uh, joined forces with Piedmont. Uh, we're trying to increase and enhance the skill sets that we already have as far as EMT and provide better for our citizens. Response, obviously, education. Uh, we have, uh, continued to do education. We've actually changed gears a little bit. A lot of our educational pieces are now using social media and those type of things. Fire Prevention Week this year, we partnered with a local business and actually delivered fire prevention education bags from the fire station. People came by and picked them up, which was great. Turned into a huge success. Uh, we handed out about 400 bags of things for kids, so it worked out real good. Uh, IEP is an incident action plan. We have developed some of those. Uh, thankfully, we haven't had to use any, uh, due to incidents. Community involvement, we're still very involved in the community. We have people come by the stations pretty frequently, even though we are in a COVID environment. Uh, we just greet them, same as everybody else with a mask. Uh, and training, obviously. Uh, we've, we've got a lot of software pieces up and running this year. So our data tracking is getting better. I know Charlie's had some challenges with some of the data that we've, that we've pulled out for him. We had an older software that was very difficult to track data, so we've, we've transitioned to that. Uh, we're trying to get back into businesses and do safety inspections as well. Uh, none of ours are punitive. We just try and help them become as safe as they can for their customer and our system, our customers as well. Uh, informational platforms, uh, like I said, we've got a lot of things up and running. Uh, we're tracking our personnel better, uh, even down to the air packs that we wear when they're inside a building, thanks to you guys. So we can see how much air each individual's got and get them out before it's a crisis level. COVID staffing impacts, we've had some COVID issues. Uh, we've had to deal with those and overcome those with part-timers and, uh, just bringing back some people in to fill shifts, uh, just because of some exposures that we've had, um, on the job and off. Uh, Mobile CAD's a big piece for us, uh, mobile computer aided dispatch. So as soon as a dispatcher types that information in the computer, it comes to the car or to the fire truck. So we're seeing that information in real time. Uh, in the, you know, I'll just share this, in a COVID environment or in a fire environment, the, as much information that we're front-loaded with, the safer it is for us. So it allows us to better prepare, put on the correct personal protective equipment, so we can deal with whatever the issue is. Uh, and obviously the grant, we talked about it earlier. Okay, so we've had some huge successes this year, uh, even in, in COVID, in reaching the community. Uh, the big successes for us, we had over 58,000 views on our social media site this year, which is incredible. Uh, it's up from about 1,400 last year. So we've really done a lot. We've tried to bullets it. Uh, did a lot of videos early in the year. We did Fitness Fridays and, uh, we've learned that people want information quickly. So we started doing one-page infograf, infographics. So we're pushing those out frequently as well, just to get people on the, the same page to educate and to give some safety messaging, so. Community events, obviously July 4th, Veterans Day, Shop of the Heroes coming up. Can't wait to do that. It's always a great event. Uh, Ride to School with a Firefighter. We actually got one of those in before COVID hit, which was awesome. Some of the schools reach out to us and say, hey, we want a raffle Ride to School with a Firefighter and, uh, they raffle that off to help raise money for the PTAs and POs. So really cool event. Uh, Virtual Storytime and Virtual Open House. Uh, I think some of you tuned in. We did a Facebook Live station tour, which was cool. And, uh, people were asking questions and, uh, it was, it was a real good time. Uh, 9/11 remembrance is always something that we, that we want to do, we want to participate in because it changed our nation completely. And another event that we've got coming up that we all look forward to is San and the K. And it'll be the last Saturday before Christmas. So look forward to that. Some of the partnerships, uh, obviously city departments, we interact with everybody in the city frequently. Uh, some of the county agencies, Piedmont EMS is huge. Uh, we spend a lot of time with those guys, both in training and on responses. Uh, York County Fire Service, we're actively involved with them. Uh, emergency management, we've done a lot with them due to the COVID-related crisis that we've seen. Uh, partnerships there has been really strong. Uh, we, this year, we became a fire-safe city and that's all in part due to the community resource or, uh, community risk reduction and Fire Safe City program, which was great. Uh, some of the national and international pieces that we deal with, International Association of Fire Chiefs, uh, International Code Council and the National Fire Protection Association, we're tied into all of those. International Code Council piece we're tied into with, uh, Tom and those guys at Building Standards doing plans review and inspections. So just a lot of different involvements and, uh, it's, uh, really paid a lot of dividends for us this year.
Any questions, Chief? Thank you very much, Chief.
All right. Thank you.
Next we'll do, uh, Parks and Rec. I'm assuming that's Joey?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me for our year-end report. Um, first slide we have here is our participation numbers. As you can see, um, from fall of 2019 to fall of 2020, we did, uh, experienced a dip of approximately 350, 360 kids. Um, that's to be expected, um, due to, uh, you know, COVID concerns, things of that sort. Um, you'll see a slight uptick in fall waitlist as well. Um, part of that was because of limitations we had field space-wise, um, from the Fort Mill School District, so unfortunately, we did have to, um, uh, turn away participants more so than we would. Uh, spring, uh, we, we actually broke a record for, uh, our program in registration, um, this spring season. We were on the verge of starting that season and then everything got really weird. But that kind of leads into what we're able to accomplish this summer. I can't thank my staff enough, um, for us to even be able to have a spring season. Us along with, uh, Rock Hill doing some, uh, spring sports in June when we're allowed to by the governor. Uh, we were the only recreation organizations in York County that was able to actually put together, um, some type of sports program. Um, we ran it from mid-June to mid-July and had over a thousand participants. So pretty cool to be able to give those families and those kids the opportunity to participate. My staff did a tremendous job, uh, organizing everything, uh, without having any field, uh, fields from the Fort Mill School District and our maintenance guys. Uh, the summer's typically a time where we're busy with projects and mowing and I tasked them with not only still, uh, accomplishing those things, but also adding on doing ball fields, uh, seven days a week as well. So, um, tremendous, uh, job by our staff to not only, uh, have a spring season, but carry it over into the fall. Um, we've been very successful, knock on wood. We didn't really, uh, experience too many, uh, COVID scares, uh, throughout the course of the season, so hopefully that, that trend continues. To piggyback on all that, um, I apologize for the numbers that make it seem misleading, but our adult sports, um, stayed pretty consistent. Ignore the spring drop-off of 37 to 34. It makes it look like we had a tremendous, uh, decrease there, but we've always hovered around the 36, 37, um, range in adult sports. None of that's changed, um, this, this upcoming year.
Is that the number of teams?
Yes, yeah, that, that encompasses women's, men's, uh, softball, along with co-ed adult kickball. Um, in, in terms of projects, we had two major projects this year. Uh, one was, uh, one that we had in June, the Windgemmer Park Pavilion. Um, along with just the pavilion area, which is obviously the big ticket item that everyone sees on top list, just to give kudos to my staff again, they did a tremendous amount of pruning, um, around the park. Really, uh, tighten up some of the views, make it, uh, a lot more visible from different angle points. Cut down some trees that really need to come down, really dedicate that time to, uh, making everything look sharp before the pavilion and then obviously, um, the pavilion's been a huge hit, not only just with people visiting, but, um, rentals have, have been pretty consistent. We had one last weekend, so it's, it stayed rented out since we opened up in June and started going. Obviously, a big part of that, uh, project was through SED and our money and then obviously, um, through hospitality tax as well to get that um, taken care of. Then the one, it seems like it was 18 years ago, because of, uh, at the timing of it, but in February, uh, we were able to open the, uh, first, um, uh, accessible, um, playground in, uh, York County, which is really cool. Trailhead, um, we opened it. It was a madhouse. It was extremely popular and then everything shut down, um, for quite some time and, um, the use of the park has slowly started to pick up and it's, it's gotten to the point where it's really crowded out there again. Obviously, some challenges figuring out the parking situation and getting all that squared away because we didn't anticipate, um, that, that much usage out of it, but now that we've gotten that dialed in, um, it, it's obviously a tremendous asset for, uh, for the city. And, um, you know, I just wanna, not to kiss anyone's butt, but I just want to thank council for all of y'all's, um, support, um, not only verbally, but financially towards all these different park projects. Um, y'all have really shown a focus towards recreation and really looking forward to carrying that hopefully in 2021, um, to much larger things with Catawba Park.
Thank you, Joe. Now my favorite subject, utilities. With Phil. The Sludge Man.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Give you a quick overview. Mine will be short and sweet. Some department highlights from, uh, Utility Department. Of course, we repainted, uh, the Shoreline exterior of the Shoreline tank. Uh, that was back in February of 2020. We were able to add a new blower and air line at our wastewater treatment plant number two. Had you seen the old one, you'd know why. Uh, we began some annual manhole lining.
Ooh.
And we'll have some pictures of some of these things. Again, installation on a new clarifier at a wastewater treatment plant number three. That project is now completed. Uh, we assisted the fire department with a new fire line for their, uh, sprinkler system at the number two fire department. Uh, we began the adopt hydrant program and then, uh, of course, the lovely new water tower still being constructed as you enter into the city, still working on. Then we, with that project, we came, uh, the new York County meter relocation. And of course, our day-to-day, um, leaks that we have to deal with. So here's just a picture of the, uh, painted tank at Shoreline. Guys were able to get in, contractors, and knock that out rather quickly. That's through our contracted, uh, maintenance program. Those, uh, gentlemen take care of those on an annual basis. Uh, this is painted on a five-year rotation schedule on the exterior. So another five years it'll be painted. We're waiting for this one to be painted because we need to take it offline. And we're waiting on the new one to be constructed, be in service, so we can do this one outside here, but anyway. Uh, of course, some pictures of the new air line, uh, and the blower at wastewater treatment plant two. The old line went underground. Of course, it was cast. Uh, there was some, we were blowing more air into the ground than we were into the treatment plant, so therefore we needed a new line and that's stainless steel. And we were able to get that installed last November. Uh, this is a picture of, uh, a new project that we started this year. It's, um, helps relieve INI, inflow and infiltration into those manholes. And we have a contractor that comes in and cleans those manholes. We've done two wet wells at our, at our, um, pump stations. LS2 and LS3, that's Mark cases in Point Clear. And then we've done, I think, seven manholes, troublesome areas that we knew that we had some infiltration. What they do, they come in and say, pretty much a two-part, two-part epoxy liner and it's guaranteed for 10 years to not have any, uh, inflow infiltration. And hopefully, as things progress, we'll be able to do more and more of these to reduce that INI, so when we do have heavy rain events, uh, we won't get flooded out as bad in our treatment plants.
Did Charlie pick the orange color?
Well, I figured if it was orange, you know, it belongs in the manhole. No, he loved the color. I, of course, do not. But anyway, if it stops the water, I don't care what color it is. Uh, this is our latest project that we've been working on, uh, for quite some time, trying to get the contractor back in here due to the COVID pandemic. We finally got him back in here, uh, late August. Uh, we were able to wrap this, uh, new clarifier project up. Still have some punch list items to do, but it is, uh, installed and in operation and, um, it's nice to have some new technology, uh, to work with for change versus 45, 48-year-old technology. Uh, again, this is just some pictures of new, uh, fire hydrant and fire line that the utility department installed and helped install at, uh, fire department number two. I think that project was completed around the turn of the fiscal year, November of last year, 2019. And then, of course, our adopt hydrant program has been successful, of course, until the pandemic hit. We, uh, had several volunteers to adopt their hydrants in front of the yards or in their neighborhoods, things of that nature and had some, uh, good community involvement in that. Hopefully, that'll pick up as we, uh, get back into the springtime warmer months.
How many, um, hydrants in total, like are, have, have been adopted and how many are left? Is there a lot?
I'm sorry. I interrupted you.
No, you're fine.
What was your question? How many are left? A bit?
Yeah, how many, how many are left? Is, is there a lot or...
There's a lot, yes. Uh, I would have to get with, uh, the fire chief. We work together on those. We're trying to get a recount now.
So there's lots of opportunity?
Oh, yes, there are a lot of opportunity. Yes. Uh, we have had some Boy Scout projects in the past. Uh, our latest Boy Scout project was over in, um, Lake Ridge Community. He went through that area and painted close to 100 hydrants, but that's been a couple of years ago. But that's... But that's when we started this adopt a hydrant program to get more community involvement. So they, you know, the person or whoever adopts the hydrant can look out for theft, things of that nature, and just basically keep it up to date with color codes. So it helps our fire department out when they pull up and they know how much water they're going to get out of that hydrant.
Cool. And do you guys supply the paint? Or is that something that...
We supply the paint, all materials. All we need is volunteers to paint them the color code that we ask them to paint.
All right. Take that home with you guys, sure.
And of course, you see the lovely water tower project. It's been ongoing for quite some time. Hopefully, we're getting near an end. You see the primer coat that's being painted on it now. This, of course, was a couple of weeks ago. They moved rather quickly until we started getting some rain. And of course, they're going to try to get it completed hopefully soon, but they're going to have to before the cold weather hits or they'll not be able to paint. So they're working, hopefully, weekends and things of that nature when the weather permits to get that finished up. But hopefully, it'll be completed before the end of the month. We're keeping our fingers crossed, at least. Of course, along with that project came the relocation of the meter vault. So now, if you cross over that area in the road, up above Hibbert Graham, coming into the city, you'll cross over that asphalt there that's been replaced. As soon as you cross that, we now have the ownership of that water line between that point all the way into the city. We gained three, an additional three fire hydrants, seven service customers. And then, of course, like I said, just the footage of that water line between the distance between there and City Hall. The past year or fiscal year, we had thirty-five service line leaks, no main line leaks in TCAD one. And then, I believe, around twenty-eight, twenty-nine service connection leaks, and then five main line leaks in TCAD two. And looking at that on a yearly trend, it did trend down slightly. So hopefully, heading in the right direction along with that trend. But when the new water tower comes online, we'll see. Shouldn't increase any pressure, but, you know, there's always a possibility of some fun times. And then, of course, sanitary sewer overflows. We've had one over the past fiscal year. I believe that was at Neptune's Landing back in February due to a rain event. So it overflowed, yes. My goal is to get to zero there. So we're working towards it as we train staff, get them better prepared on cleaning, cambering, finding issues, and fixing those issues. Hopefully, we'll get to where we can get to zero and then maintain that level of service. And of course, some employee achievements over the past year. Our Assistant Utilities Director, Antonio Maturro, received his Level B Water Distribution License. And then, one of our team leaders, our water team leader, Dominic Novellio, got his Level B Collection System License. Then we have had two employees start their careers with the city over the past year. So we have two openings right now, and hopefully, they'll be filled before long.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on to item three, approval of minutes. Council, you've read the minutes from the last regular meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, any changes whatsoever? Seeing none, the minutes stand as printed. Item number four is committee reports. So let's start with the Economic Development Commission.
All right, so we met on the twenty-sixth, and we did have great attendance and a quorum. Discussion of food trucks came up again, and, you know, the topic came up. It's, why do we keep talking about food trucks? You know, what's in it for the city? And, you know, the answer would be, you know, that would get some, these people a foothold to find out, you know, if there's a demand for what they're selling in the city and maybe entice them to put a brick-and-mortar business. You know, we have a couple of mixed-use projects that we're looking at. And in doing that, we can entice them to possibly open something there, and whether it be that or a food hall concept or that. We did, one of the members is going to reach out and see what they're doing in Rock Hill. In some of the areas, they have a lot of rallies in Rock Hill. And a question came up, could we put a couple of trucks beside City Hall? Another topic came up that someone mentioned that they looked at was Fat Burrito, which was a semi-famous place up in Charlotte, is looking for a home. And, you know, could we entice them to, you know, find something down this way? The head of the EDC has reached out to Retail Strategies to contact some of these companies, and they've been very good about doing so. We're going to, they plan on pushing some more things to Retail Strategies about the desired businesses that we would like to have in this area and also any property that would be available for annexation. And Retail Strategies is going to make an onsite visit in January, is what I was told. So very much looking forward to that. And then I was just trying to figure out when we could have the next meeting with the holidays coming up. So the next meeting of the EDC was set to be on December the eighth. That's it for the EDC.
Thank you. Let's go to item four B, the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So this month, the Planning Commission did not meet, but I do want to make another plug for the Planning Commission's work plan that thank you to Chairman Leonard for sending out that to all of council. And thank you, Councilmember Overman, for your feedback so far. Please do take a look at that and let us know if there's anything else that you identify as something that we might want to defer to the Planning Commission to study and make a recommendation to this board over the next year. So thanks again for your taking a look at that, and that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Ryan, you still with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, thank you. We're on five, moved on to unfinished business. Item five A, this is the second reading of amendment to zoning code article thirteen, is that right? Six, seventy-eight, that's thirteen. I'm doing me Roman numerals, I gotta add it up in my head. Section nineteen dash one oh four, fences and residential and park districts. The Planning Commission reviewed the current fence regulation within the zoning code and made recommended changes that received approval during the first reading of this amendment at our October regular meeting. Tonight's council is considering the second and final reading of this amendment to the zoning code. Are there any questions or comments before we vote? Very good, okay, I'll entertain your motion.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an amendment to the zoning code, article thirteen, section nineteen dash four oh one, fences in residential and park districts.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a second from Heather. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Yay, Carl!
Item number five B, this is the second reading of an amendment to the zoning code, article ten, section nineteen dash one thirty-five, subcode three, mixed-use district. During our regular October meeting, City Council approved the first reading of an amendment to zoning code relating to the mixed-use district. This was after members of the Planning Commission, Economic Development Commission, and City Council spent several months working on a text amendment. Many of the changes came from the recent PDD site standards that had been approved. Tonight, council will be considering the second and final reading of this amendment.
Mr. Mayor, members of, oh, do you want to ask for questions?
No, good.
Sorry.
Are there any questions? No questions? Okay, Heather, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an amendment to the zoning code, article, what is that, ten? Section nineteen dash one five three, three, mixed-use district.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Gus Machinas. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous. Let's go to new business, item six. Catch up here. All right, this is a consideration of encroachment agreement for nine eighty-eight Knob Creek Lane. The property owners at nine eighty-eight Knob Creek Lane have requested an encroachment onto city-owned property for the purpose of installing a fence. The city-owned property is green space adjacent to the out-of-bounds area on the golf course, and the area to be fenced has been maintained for some time by the homeowner. This is who again? It's the German property, Dennis German's property. There any questions or comments? Simple encroachment, very easy. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the encroachment agreement for nine eighty-eight Knob Creek Lane and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Alicia Dash. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous. All right, let's go to item seven, which is the city manager's report. Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a few things tonight. We were able to join the TK Veterans Association this past Wednesday for their annual Veterans Day celebration. Hats off to Commander Chuck Gross and the other veterans for putting that event on and for letting us be a part of it. They always do a great job with that. Moved it indoors this year because of the rain that came through, and still had a little over fifty people that were able to attend. They did a great job there. Registration for our spring 2021 recreation program begins December first. We do have a new registration software that we're rolling out that will be much simpler for our participants to use and it'll allow, also allow our patrons to be able to see our park availability for like Windjammer and Pit Karen, so that they can also book their reservations through that. Joey and his staff are working with, and it's actually, the company that's doing it is the same one that hosts our website, so it's all in one shot, so it'll look really nice. Joey and his crew have been working hard with those folks, getting the final touches on it. And they're going to put together kind of a video showing people how to navigate through it the first time because it will be brand-new. But that registration will start up December first, so we're looking forward to rolling that out. We're off to a great start to the fiscal year. Since October first, we've brought in twenty-nine impact fees, that's through today, which equates to a hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars for police, fire, and parks and rec. We also brought in twenty-three utility impact fees during that same time span totaling about a little over forty-three thousand dollars. Our business license and building permit, building inspection fees are also off to a great start, and we hope that trend will continue. But we've been pleasantly surprised so far in the first month and a half of the fiscal year. Things are going like gangbusters. So the way we ended our prior fiscal year has continued to roll forward. December, the last couple of years, is when the monsoons have started, so fingers crossed for sunshiny days. New parking lot at River Access is well underway and should be finished very soon. As of today, they've completed all the clearing and grading and have installed the stone base. Hopefully, later this week, they'll be installing the asphalt and a little connector sidewalk between the lots. Once that's completed, the new parking lot will have the parking lot line striped, and we'll re-stripe the other lots. And we're hoping all that can be finished by December first or sometime thereabouts. Big thank you to Duke Energy and specifically with them, John Crutchfield, Jennifer Bennett, and Ryan Lindsay for helping make this happen. It definitely will serve us well when the weather warms and folks return back to the river. Christmas tree lighting council, as I made y'all aware, and we'll begin that public notification push probably starting next week. The tree lighting will be held on Friday, December the fourth. Instead of the first Saturday, we're going to do it that first Friday of December. And this year, we're going to do it virtually. So we're going to Facebook Live stream it. So if you don't feel comfortable coming up to the clubhouse, you will be able to watch it, watch it from the comforts of your home. Unfortunately, this year, due to COVID concerns, the chorus won't be joining us to sing Christmas carols, and there's not going to be an opportunity to sit on Santa's lap. We want to make sure the big guy stays healthy for Christmas Eve when he flies around, so we're going to keep him at bay, but he will be onsite. He's going to join the mayor and council members to light the tree at seven PM in the same spot that we always do it. As I said previously, the public, you are welcome to attend. We ask that you please follow COVID safety guidelines, but if you don't feel comfortable with any of that, tune in on the city's Facebook page. We'll have it livestreamed for you. So, and that concludes my report for this evening, Mayor.
Any updates on the license plate readers everybody's so excited about?
License plate readers are already paying big dividends. About four hours after they went live, it popped our first person had outstanding warrants. A few hours after that, it alerted us to a stolen car that we were able to apprehend that suspect in the Walmart parking lot. And it's, they're doing very, very well. Probably one of the better investments we have made. And it's really helping our police department out. And I know Chief Parker is going to include a lot of good stuff on that with his report next month.
So those of you who don't know, I mean, we've talked about it every chance we get, the license plate readers, anytime, any place that you can come into the city of TAK, there's some passive license plate readers that read the license plate and take a picture of the car. And if it pops up as being a warrant or a stolen car or anything like that, you're going to get nabbed. So we're considering, I mean, we're continuing to be the safest city, the second safest city in South Carolina. And these license plate readers are really keeping the bad guys out of TAK, so it's really exciting. I haven't been so excited about something silly as a long time, but it really is cool. I mean, they were, the guy was tuning up the cameras and he popped somebody, it seemed like.
Yes.
So bad guys, don't come to TAK. You're going to get caught, and you're going to spend some time in jail.
And it's the same cameras that Towne Fort Mill uses, so they're able to get alerts from ours, we're able to get alerts from theirs. I believe Charlotte, or excuse me, Pineville and Rock Hill have the same. So as long as they're on the flock safety network, the chiefs are able to share those networks with each department. So chief and our command staff's getting those alerts as well as folks on patrol and dispatch, so.
You know, my first thought was that we should really not discuss this at a council meeting, but then I got to thinking about it, and the kind of people that drive into TAK and stolen cars or with outstanding warrants are probably not watching this broadcast right now, so I think we're okay.
I just want the citizens to know we're taking care of them by keeping the city as safe as possible. Like, it's one of the best technology things I've ever heard of. It's really exciting. All right, let's go to city council comments. We'll start with Alicia.
All right, Charlie, I was going to see if it's possible, if you don't have a, if you're not able to provide an update to us now, if you could maybe later, but I was going to ask about the drainage work at Lookout Park. I know that when we were having the presentation, I remembered that was a discussion that we had had that the fields oftentimes flood, the soccer fields flood, and I believe you had mentioned before that you guys were looking into doing some work there that would help that situation out. So you can get back to us on that one. And then, and then also the swings at Windjammer. I know we had conversations about this too, and I know with COVID, we kind of stopped all spending. So I was able to go to Windjammer on Sunday and enjoy that swing, and it just, you know, made me think about how awesome it is and wanted to make sure we got some more out there for folks to enjoy.
Absolutely. We're actually relocating the former swings from Trailhead Park out to Windjammer this winter. I've just got to get them repainted and get them installed and get the new bench swings ordered.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Big thanks to Charlie, Chief, Joe, and Philip for your presentations. I really do appreciate the updates. It's so helpful to hear about all the great work that you guys are doing throughout the community. And I really appreciate that. And I specifically want to give Philip a shout-out and one of your staff members, Antonio Maturro, I believe I'm saying that right? Because thanks to him, he did stop by my house. He detected a leak, was able to notify me, and that's just a really awesome level of service that our city is able to provide. When they see a leak at your house that's unusual for longer than seventy-two hours, I believe it is, they will come to your house and say, something's not right, like, can we, let's check the hoses, let's check, you know, the water line, let's figure this out for you so that you don't keep paying for water that you're not using. So super big thanks and shout-out to him so we were able to get that fixed. And then, lastly, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to all of our citizens and council, and I hope everyone has a safe and delicious holiday.
All right, thank you. Ryan, do you have anything for council comments?
No, I'll be quick, you know. First off, Happy Veterans Day last week to all those that served. And it's enough to be said, that includes you, Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant Spencer in the back of the room. So thank you, guys, for your service. Marine Corps birthday was the day prior, two hundred and forty-five years of bad ashtrays, so happy birthday, Marines. And then, lastly but not least, for all those others, the police, fire, everybody else that's out there that does what they do on a day-to-day basis. Come out this Friday night, six-thirty, Runney Park, a little police versus fire softball game, so it should be a good time. Make sure to cut out a little time, come check it out.
All right, thank you very much, Brian. Ryan? Whatever you want to be called, Marine. Heather?
I'm easy.
I also want to echo what Alicia said and thank the Department Heads, Chief Hasty and Joey and Philip. I'm excited for our ride-along next week, so I have that penciled in. I'm excited for our ride-along next week, so I have that penciled in. And I'm going to give a shout out to Philip because he doesn't often get a lot of shout outs. It's kind of like when you replace the, you know, windows in your house or the roof, it's it's not exciting and it doesn't have the glitz and the glam, but you keep everything running. So we greatly appreciate you. I want to thank, I think Tim did these, these new monitors. This is awesome. Gus's is glitchy, but mine's great. So thank you for this. This is very helpful. Hope to see everybody out on December 4th for Arbor Day and for the tree lighting and also on December 12th for the Ring of Fire. I'm excited for upcoming meeting on December 15th where we're going to be discussing specifics for Catawba Park. Big year planned for TOK next year. And so we have a lot, a lot we still want to accomplish, and so we're going to be working on that. Happy Thanksgiving and continue to stay safe and healthy.
Thank you. Gus?
Yeah, Tim, my little monitor's making Geiger counter noises over here for some reason. I hope it's not radioactive. You know, Philip, probably the best thing anybody could say is we don't talk about you a lot because you keep things running so smoothly, there's nothing happening. And, you know, for all the years that too much was happening and it wasn't good, we appreciate the silence right now. So thank you. And I'd like to also thank all the rest of the department heads. I was able to attend the Veterans Day ceremony that was that was moving, was very nice. I thought the coolest thing was at the end when everybody, as tradition goes, stands up and states their name and rank and branch of service and years of service. That was a lot of fun. I am also looking forward to the Catawba Park meeting. You know, it's one of those things that all of us has been speaking about for quite some time, but have decided it's time to make something happening. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Please travel safely and gather safely. But enjoy the time that you spend with your family. David?
Thank you very much. Echo everything everybody says. Obviously, I go last, so if I say the same thing. But department heads are doing a great job. Charlie's running the city great. Everything's running really well now, and it shows. We appreciate it. The city looks great. It's well-maintained. I just want to add one thing. The last elections, Michael Johnson from TOK was elected to Senator for the state of South Carolina. It's the first time we've ever had a senator from TOK. So congratulations to him. We're looking for great things from him. He, I have his phone number. I text him all the time. And he's going to get worn out with stuff that he can do for us. So appreciate everybody voting for him. It's going to be, let's see if this works out. I think it's going to be just great. So congratulations, Michael Johnson, on being the first ever United States Senator from TOK. And with that, I will consider a motion for adjournment. Sorry?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
Second.
I think that's probably going to be unanimous. It always is unanimous. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 We're adjourned. Thank you.